Appeals. And the recording is in progress. And our first case is 2127 Danner, 31 Sammaset Avenue, map 28 parcel 119, application for a special permit pursuant to Massachusetts General Law C48 S6 and Wellfleet zoning bylaws 6.15 and 8.42 to demolish a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling on a pre-existing non-conforming lot and to build a new non-conforming single-family dwelling. They also seek a floodplain exemption pursuant to Wellfleet zoning bylaw 6.13 and 6.14 for the proposed construction, which is required because a portion of the property is in the VE zone. And Mr. Zander, I believe you're presenting.
Madam Chairman, I'm going to recuse myself from this.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, Jan is going to recuse herself and the board for this will be myself, Trevor, Andy, Will and Manny.
Okay, thank you. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Good evening, everybody. It's nice to see you all on the small screen. I'm Ben Zander and I'm here on behalf of John and Terry and Danner. And John is on the line with us as well. Also on the line is John O'Reilly, who's our site engineer, and Andrew Mitchell, who's our architect. We were in front of you on October 28th to hear this matter. It was a little premature at that point to have you hear the matter because we hadn't been in front of CONSCOM yet. And I'd like to report that we've gone through the conservation process and received a positive unanimous vote with compliments from the Conservation Commission for the house that's been designed by A.D. Inc. I did file some supplemental materials with this board on December 2nd and what we were doing doesn't really change the look of the house in terms of how this board is looking at the property. But what we, in reaction to some concerns by the Conservation Commission, we converted foundation on the water side into slab. So all the new construction areas that are within the 50-foot setback from the top of the coastal bank have been converted to a slab foundation. That had the effect of pushing back the outdoor shower on the north side further closer to the road and pushing a window out further back to the road. And also, John and Terry relocated the sandy footpath coming off of Sammaset Road a little further away from the house on the north side. And also, we've added IA components to the septic system on the roadside where the septic system is sandwiched in between the house and the road. And that was really at the request of the Conservation Commission, even though IA is not a required upgrade for this particular property. So, but you know, I have nothing new to add to the project. As the board can see, the house is fairly well squeezed in between Sammaset Road and Cape Cod Bay or Wellfleet Harbor. It's, they're making it a little bit more conforming in terms of setbacks, but they're essentially still keeping the house centered on the lot. So I'm hoping that with that very brief overview, the board can ask us any questions that we can answer and can hopefully move towards an approval. Thank you.
Thank you. And I do have two letters on this, on this one. The first is from to Chris. Dear Christine, it was a pleasure to meet you over the phone today. As we discussed, John and Terry Danner provided us with a copy of their application dated September 28th, 2021, seeking a special permit and a floodplain exemption. My wife Beth and I recently purchased the adjoining property locating at 87 Massasoit Road. Naturally, we closely reviewed the application. Our conclusion is that the Danner's design for 31 Sammaset Avenue would be in keeping with the classic Cape Cod beach homes in the area, and as such, it would be a wonderful addition to the neighborhood and the town. Please feel free to contact us directly if you have any questions. So they are Mike and Beth, Stephen, Beth. However, I don't have a last name for them. Anyway.
It's Jamroz. I'm not sure how it's pronounced, but it's.
Jamroz, J.A.M.R.O.Z. Okay. Thank you. Okay, and the second letter is, Ms. Inger and fellow members, the Wellfleet Zoning Board of Appeals, though we have not been formally notified, we have been informed that the existing dwelling at 31 Sammaset Avenue in Wellfleet, Massachusetts will be demolished and a proposal for new larger dwelling is being reviewed by members of the ZBA on October 28th, 2021. The front of the current dwelling does not appear to conform to the legal setbacks required by the town of Wellfleet, though there is a garage under the current dwelling. The previous owners used it for storage. Consequently, the previous owners, their relatives and tenants would park illegally on Sammaset Avenue and block access to the Sammaset path that leads from the upper to the lower end of Sammaset. We ask that as the plans for the new dwelling are reviewed, the design provides for adequate legal parking on the property. We also ask that the new plans only include downlighting on the outside areas of the dwelling to continue to promote and support the Dark Sky Initiative. Thank you for your attention. Karen Kaminsky and Richard La Pasta. And they are 34 Sammaset Avenue, Wellfleet, Massachusetts. Anyone else from the audience who wants to speak? You can, you can hit the button that says raise hand and I will see you that way too, if you would like. Okay. Seeing no hands, I will go to the board for questions. So Manny.
My question would be on the septic system. If that's below the floodplain elevation, I've seen the water on a high tide and one of those nor'easters come in and just fill that road right up. What protects it from going into these tanks? Maybe O'Reilly, one of them, can talk about this or tell us about it.
John, can you tell us a bit about that?
Thank you. And through the chair. This particular parcel sits up on quite a bit of a bluff above Wellfleet Harbor. The grade elevation, the ground elevation around the home ranges from 42 to 34 feet above mean sea level. So this is not in a, in a flood zone. The house portion above the top of the coastal bank is not in the flood zone. The flood zone intersects the coastal bank somewhere between elevation 11 and elevation 38. And actually, there is a flood zone elevation on the planet of elevation 29. So we are, we are above that floodplain. So that floodwater is getting in the septic system is not a concern at this, at this site.
Okay. That's all I have. Otherwise.
Okay, Will.
Yeah, I'd just like to ask Ben if he would respond to the two issues brought up in the second letter that was read to us.
Well, yeah, through the chair?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll go with the second one first, which is downlit. That's a requirement of town. So you know, the board can certainly condition the approval that the light fixtures be down, but I believe they are anyways. With regard to access to the path, as the board knows from going out here, this, this road doesn't, it doesn't continue through. This is the end of the road. So there's a, there's a pathway. My client's own the westerly half of the road. And then the butter across the street owns the easterly half. I believe that's the case. I haven't done the title work, but that's generally the way it works out here. So, you know, my clients have a right to use that roadway to park their cars. What they can't do is they can't interfere with somebody's pedestrian access through the path to the extent that there are legal rights. Well, and I haven't, I haven't researched whether there are legal rights in that roadway or over that path. There may be some, what we call implication rights based on the subdivision plan of owners in the subdivision to use the subdivision ways to get through. And they're, and they're also, even if those weren't there, there, there might be adverse possession rights that people have acquired over time to pass up and down that path. But that doesn't prevent the parking of vehicles in front of the house. It just means that they can't park their vehicles in such a way that it keeps somebody from walking through. So looking at the plan, there's really, there's really not much room on the lot itself, just the way that it's laid out, the geography to park on the lot. So there's actually, you can pull into the garage and there's room for, it looks like maybe about one car, if that, in the driveway. But, but historically, I believe the property has been used for parking of cars and I think it'll continue to do that.
Do you have anything else, Will?
No. I just want to confirm. So basically, what you're saying is the parking of the cars does not interfere with the pedestrian access.
It should, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, I've seen it myself, so I understand.
I think Ms. Kaminsky wants to ask a question about that. You may ask.
Yeah. So in the past, cars have parked all over that road. They consider it, it was considered free game for them. And it was very difficult for people to access the rest of Sammaset Avenue. You call it a walking path, but it's essentially the extension from Upper Sammaset down to Lower Sammaset. I, I understand that it's a very narrow piece of property that the, that the owners are building on. But I do want to make sure that it is understood that they own the property on the western side to the telephone pole. And that's it. The rest of it is, is public property and can be accessed by everyone that wants to use the path. That's all I'm asking.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Andy?
Yeah, that's really sort of the subject that I was interested in. I walk up and down that road quite often since I lived near there. And I believe that Ben is probably right that adverse possession may play a role in this, given that people walk down this road up to, past the applicant's property and then down the stairs. And I'm sure that the applicants will do their very best not to block access. But I mean, I don't know how we can condition this because my concern is not so much that they themselves will block it if they're the only ones that are there. But if there are others who are visiting or staying with them and there are additional vehicles, there isn't very much room, as Ben has already indicated, for additional vehicles. And I don't exactly know how the applicants would plan to deal with that, given the situation. So that's my concern.
Okay. Where am I? Trevor?
I was just about to look up whether, don't we require a certain number of parking spaces? Or is that only?
Generally, that's businesses, but I don't.
I don't think your commercial residential doesn't require spaces.
Good question.
Joe, Ben can answer that.
I'm sorry, can the board hear me okay?
Yeah.
I believe that the zoning code allocates two parking spaces per dwelling. Now, I'm not sure that's a realistic number, depending on the size and the use of the dwelling. But I think that parking is certainly within the purview of this board. It's one of the, it's one of the things that you look at deciding whether to grant a special permit. But I remind the board that we're not talking about a change of the use of this property or an increase in the number of the bedrooms of the property or, or even a significant increase in the size of the house. So I think there is a dynamic out there where, and listening to Ms. Kaminsky, certainly some people in the past have probably interfered with people walking through there. And I think John and Terry are going to have to do their best also to make sure that, you know, they maintain harmony in the neighborhood. But I'm just not sure how this board conditions that or regulates that.
Right. I was just wondering if that isn't a, a police matter if people are blocking a public road.
So can I speak a minute?
Yeah, okay.
Hi, thank you. So it is a public road and the, the public pack is maintained by the town. As is the road, sort of, but it is maintained. So it is, so I, it is important to reiterate that the new owners, they bought a substandard lot. They knew it when they bought it. They have put a house on that comes right up to the edge of their property. And I just want to make sure that they understand that they have to respect the abilities of other residents of Wellfleet to be, to use the property. You understand that, Ben, don't you?
And did you want to respond to that? Yeah.
No, no, I do, I do want to respond because I think it's an important issue. It's, I don't think it's an issue that could be, that could be brushed off. It's, it's, I think that, and again, I don't want to speak for John and Terry, but I think, I think harmony in the neighborhood is probably as important as anything else that any one of, any one of the owners can have out there. So it's noted. John's on the line, he's listening. I just, I'm just, I think that this property is going to continue to have to be used the way it was before, which is that there's going to have to be responsible management of parking in front of this house so that to the extent there are rights to people to pass through, they can get through there. And I'm not brushing that off. I just don't know exactly what those rights are. So, so I, it's, it's a concern that's, that's well noted and, and I, and I hope the board takes note of it as well.
All right. Trevor, I think we cut you off.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know. Just reading section 6.3, which is and it says, "Any building here and after constructed or converted to another use shall be located on its parcel of land that there may be provided adequate off-street parking in conformance with the following minimum standards." And then it says two spaces for residential. So, I mean, I guess we have to decide if, if this is a building that's being constructed. I mean, or technically is being reconstructed. So maybe it doesn't need parking because the existing doesn't have parking. Certainly, the zoning bylaw reads that if it was a brand-new house and a piece of land, that it would have the two parking spaces. But it's pre-existing, so maybe we can get around that.
Does it have two parking spaces?
No. Out of chair?
Yes.
There's one parking space in the garage.
Yes.
And then there is what I would call, and I'm trying to be charitable here and honest, what I would call a half a space, you know, between the garage door and the road. So I think that if you pull one car in onto the apron, you're going to have, looks like maybe half a car standing out, which certainly isn't going to interfere. But, but again, you know, and I'm going to correct, somebody who spoke, this is a private road. You know, John and Terry own half that road. They have every right to park their cars there. As you all know, in many, many neighborhoods, go to Lieutenant's Island, Wolf Point, you know, anywhere out, you know, people are parking in the private ways in front of their house and they have a right to do that. It's just what you can't do is you can't unreasonably interfere with somebody else's, somebody else's ability to get through. So in this particular case, there really isn't any significant or meaningful relocation of the house. It, there's no change in the number of bedrooms. It's, it's, it just is what it is. I think the problem is that there's an inherent, what I would call a problem, I'm not sure how big it is, with, with the parking at the end of this road. And so again, I think it's incumbent on John and Terry to deal with that. But I don't think that it means that this property, this property, this project doesn't meet the requirements of the bylaw.
Okay. Ms. Kaminsky, I'm going to go on to the rest of the board for right now. I may come back to you.
One clarification, it is a public road. Somehow, it's been marked as a private road.
It's not. The town maintains.
But it is a maintained road. It is a public road. That's all I'm saying. Bye.
Sharon, can I interject something before? I mean, it seems to me that if the parking is not impacted from the old design to the new design, that shouldn't be an issue that, that we should be concerned about. I mean, it is what it is. And if, if, if this new design was going to eliminate parking area, that should be an issue. But if, if the parking remains the same, the same problem to the extent that there was one before exists when it's, when it's after, is this discussion really sort of moot?
Thank you. And I want to get to, I want to get to Rita and Al before we, before we close. Rita?
I have no questions.
And Al?
I tend to agree with Will. I think that the parking situation is what it is. It's a five-bedroom house, replacing a five-bedroom house on essentially the same slab. So I don't really have any questions. I, I don't, I don't really see any other issues. It's, it's pretty much a switcheroo, in my view.
And, and I guess my feeling is in this case that, you know, these are new owners who are getting the pushback from bad behavior by the old owners. And clearly, it is an issue, but as you say, and as Will says, that it is an issue that has existed. It doesn't really come under, to me, it doesn't come under the jurisdiction of this board, but I may be wrong in that. Anyone else? Andy?
Yeah, I believe, and it's really subject to, Ben can either confirm or oppose my statement now, but based on my many trips by this, the old house, I believe based on what I'm seeing, that there are going to be fewer parking spaces with the new house. So I mean, I agree with what everybody's saying, and I don't know what we can do. But I, you know, it's, it's a concern. And Ben, I have a question to you. I don't even know if you can answer it, but who owns the property, the other half of the road? Who owns the other side of the road? Do you know?
May I, Sharon?
Yes, and would you answer the question about fewer parking spaces as well?
Yeah, I can't, I can't answer that. I am not as familiar with the onset conditions as John or, or, or Peter. I'm going to ask, another member of the team can answer that. I'm going to look at the butters list right now and try to answer the question about the owner while, while other people are talking.
Okay. Does someone have a sense of, of are there more or fewer parking spaces in the, in the new design than in the old design?
Through the chair.
Yes.
This is John O'Reilly.
Yes.
The, the front of the existing home, there is a garage there and there is room on the current pavement or what, what is there for pavement to pull a, pull a car in or two cars in. And we are really not changing that as far as the area in front of the house. There is still going to be room for a car to either pull in straight or parallel in front of the house.
That, does that answer your question, Andy?
Yeah, I mean, like I said before, I'm not exactly sure what our role is here. It's just, it's a concern and I'm not, and I'm really, I guess I'm talking to the applicants through their attorney. Hoping and expecting that they will not block it. I can't, I'm not accusing them of wanting to do that, nor do I think they will. It's just a, it's a very narrow space and I'm sure they'll do the best they can, but I don't, there isn't much room up there.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Manny.
Manny. What about signage? Can they put the town or whoever, put some kind of sign that will state, you know, where you can walk or where you can't?
I think walking isn't the issue. I think the issue is parking. Yeah, I think it's, I think nobody's blocking the public access to the shore. I think the problem comes when they block the end of that road.
I got you.
If they're having a party or something.
So I guess call the police.
Yeah, that, that was sort of where I was, you know? It was like, it seems to me that's a, a police matter more than it's ours, but I mean, I'd be happy to condition a permit on such a thing, but I don't think we have the, the jurisdiction on that. But I could be wrong. Somebody wants to correct me.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just, just to answer Andy's question, I'm just looking at the assessor's map. Across the street from this property is a, is, is what looks like sort of, looks like a vacant piece of land, but it's really not. There's a house at 122, and I think it might be Comes Road. And that's, I believe the Jamros has purchased that property. They were one of the parties that wrote a letter in support of the project. So I don't, I don't think the issue that we're dealing here has to do with neighbors across the street being concerned about the parking. I think it has to do with people that are, that are using, people that want to get through. You know, to get down to the beach or back that are having the concern here. So.
Yep. Right. Anyone else? Where are we on this, guys?
I think we can move for findings.
Okay, you're going to make a motion to move for findings?
Yes.
All right, I need a second in that case.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor, Will?
Aye.
Al? No. Andy?
Aye.
You're next. Manny?
Aye.
Trevor?
Aye.
And Sharon? Hi. All right, this is what I have for findings. This is an application for a special permit pursuant to Massachusetts General Law C48 S6 and Wellfleet Zoning Bylaw 6.13 and 8.4.2 to demolish a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling on a pre-existing non-conforming lot and to build a new non-conforming single-family dwelling. They also seek a floodplain exemption pursuant to Wellfleet Zoning Bylaw 6.13 and 6.14 for the proposed construction, which is required because a portion of the property is in the VE zone. Yeah, VE zone. The lot is in the R1 district. The lot is a lawfully pre-existing non-conforming structure on a pre-existing non-conforming lot, having been built in 1960, according to the assessor's office. Existing non-conformities regarding the structure are inadequate lot area, 11,720 square feet, where 30,000 square feet is required. Frontage, 80 feet, where 135 is required. Intrusion into the front setback, nine feet, six inches, where 30 feet is required. An intrusion into the side setback, nine foot, two inches, where 25 feet is required. The new structure will be constructed in generally the same location as the existing structure. Now, Ben, you've got to keep me honest here on this because I don't know if when you moved to the slab, you changed these, these numbers. But what I have is the new structure will reduce the front setback non-conformity slightly to 9.7 inches and increase the side setback non-conformity to seven feet, one inch. The building coverage will increase from 9.4% to 13.8%, but will remain conforming in the zoning district, 15% allowed. There will be no change. Yes?
Those numbers are still correct.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I couldn't tell from slabs. There will be no change in use. The use conforms to the objectives of the R1 district. There was one appearance in, there was one letter in support of the application. There was one letter raising questions about the application. The board has found pursuant to Wellfleet Zoning Bylaw 8.4.2.3, scenic views from public ways and developed properties have been considerably treated. Reasonable efforts, well, this is a tricky one. Reasonable efforts have been made to minimize visibility of parking in service areas. Well, there's no service areas parking from public streets. And traditional public access to or along the shoreline has been maintained because they're not blocking that. They're not blocking the road to the beach. The proposed alteration will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming structure. And the applicant has demonstrated that the benefits of the proposal will outweigh any adverse effects on the town and the vicinity after considering the district objectives for the district as provided for in Wellfleet Zoning Bylaw 3.2 and the relevant criteria set forth in Wellfleet Zoning Bylaw 8.4.2. That's what I have. Changes, questions? Amendments?
I will move to accept the findings of fact.
Okay, and I need a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor, Will?
Aye.
Trevor?
Aye.
Darren? Aye. Andy?
Aye.
And Manny?
Aye.
And now I have the findings for the floodplain exemption under Wellfleet Zoning Bylaw 6.14. One, the proposed structure will not result in increased flood heights, decreased flood storage capacity, additional threats to public safety. One, the proposed structure will not result in increased flight, flood heights, decreased flood storage capacity, additional threats to public safety, extraordinary public expense, cause fraud on or victimization of the public or conflict with any existing local laws. Two, the project will comply in all respects with the state building code, including the requirements of seven four four point zero regarding flood zones. And three, the applicants have received an order of conditions from the conservation commission and have provided that to the Board of Appeals. So I need a motion to accept those findings.
I will move, oh, I'll move to accept those findings.
Okay, and I need a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor, Will?
Aye.
Trevor? Manny?
Aye.
Andy?
Aye.
And Sharon? Aye. Now I need, we need two different motions.
I will move to grant the special permit.
Okay, and a second?
Second.
And all in favor, Will?
Aye.
Manny?
Aye.
Trevor? Andy?
Aye.
And Sharon? Aye. And then move to grant the floodplain exemption? One more thing, you've got to move to grant the floodplain. Okay, and Will seconds, all in favor, Will?
Aye.
And Trevor? Manny?
Aye.
Andy?
Aye.
And Sharon? Aye. Okay. All right. Moving on.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Nice to see you all again. I'm signing off. Thank you.
Yep, we don't see you again tonight, do we Ben?
I don't think so, so good luck everybody. Take care.
Thank you.
Bye bye.
All right. Calling the second case, welcome back Jan. Back Jan. Okay. This is twenty-one, twenty-eight Lewis, ten Ryder Court. Map fourteen parcel ten, application for a special permit under Wealthy zoning by law six point one point four but in five point four B to increase building lot coverage from twenty point eight percent to twenty-one point nine percent. And the board for this one will be Trevor, Manny, Jan, Will and Al. And Mr. Carson, I believe, is going to present this one, yes?
Hey, good evening all. Can you hear me all?
Yes, yes.
Wonderful, I did it right.
You did fine.
Okay, well, this is not a lot to present. I think the facts present themselves. The proposed addition is hoping to increase the living space of this house by one percent of the total value of the house as it sits, a, a non-conforming lot, but geez, how else, what else can I say about that? That's pretty much it. We're just looking to get three more feet to add on for a larger kitchen. And the adjoining areas would increase by that much as well. And if you have all the paperwork and all the plans in front of you, I think that, that's pretty well described. There's really not much else to say.
Thank you very much. And I have no letters on this. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to Ryder Court? Nope. Okay. All right, I will start with Will.
No, I have no questions.
Manny?
I have no questions on this either.
Okay. Al?
I have no questions.
Rita?
No questions.
Jan?
Um, just one thing, I, I'm looking at the site plan that Mr. O'Reilly gave put together. I believe that this, in the zoning table, the setbacks are inaccurate, and maybe we should make a note of that. It says that the central district setbacks are thirty feet in the front and rear and twenty-five on the side. But zoning, the zoning book says that in central districts, front and rear is twenty-five and the side is twenty.
Okay. Yeah, I think you're right. So front and rear setback is twenty-five and the other is twenty. Yep.
Can we make note that that is incorrect?
Right. Ten indeed. I don't think we have that in the findings, but yeah, because that, that part's not changing, but yep, thank you. Anything else?
No.
Okay, where am I? Trevor?
Um, no, I mean, that's an important note because the twenty-foot setback means it's conforming and a twenty-five.
So he shouldn't be here.
Well, he's here because of the lock coverage.
Yeah. Yeah.
Right, just one percent change in, in lock coverage?
Right, right. I believe that's the only reason.
Right.
Yeah.
They're not changing anything on the setbacks, I don't believe, right?
Well, I mean, the rear is a little bit smaller, but it's, but it's much greater than conforming anyway, so.
Right.
Yeah, no, I don't have any issues.
Okay, where am I? Rita? I saw Will, I saw Andy, did we?
No questions.
I don't have any questions, except that the
I'm sorry. Can I ask a question?
Where are you?
Can you hear me?
Oh, oh, is that? We can't, I didn't know where you were. Yes, question?
Sorry. Yeah, I was just wondering, in central district, what is the percentage of lock coverage supposed to be? Isn't it fifteen percent?
Yeah.
Yes.
And so they're at twenty point eight percent already and they want to go to twenty-one point nine percent?
Correct.
When the lock coverage is supposed to be fifteen percent?
Right.
That's, that's concerning.
That's why they're here.
That's why they're here instead of just doing it. Right.
Right, so it's more than one percent though, from what the baseline is supposed to be.
Right.
Right, okay. I was just, I was just trying to make sure I was clear on that. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Nobody else? Questions on this one? Okay. Did you?
I, I'll, I'll, I'll move, we go to findings.
Okay, well.
Second.
All right, Manny seconded. Here's what I have. Thanks to Will. Twenty-one, twenty-eight Deborah Lewis, ten Ryder Court, map fourteen parcel ten. Request for a special permit to permit construction that will increase building coverage above the maximum allowed. The applicant owns a single-family residential house situated in the central district constructed prior to the adoption of zoning and proposes to make improvements hereinafter referred to as the additional space. The house is pre-existing non-conforming in that the maximum building coverage allowed in the central district is fifteen percent, while the existing building coverage is twenty point eight percent. The construction of the additional space would create an additional eighty-six square feet of building coverage resulting in building coverage of twenty-one point nine percent. The applicable provisions for this application under the town of Wealthy zoning bylaws are section five point four point three, fifteen percent maximum building coverage in the central district, section six point one point five point one B, section six point one point five four and section eight point four point two. Section six one point one point five one B, the board finds that the construction of the additional space is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming structure. Section eight point four point two point one, the board finds that the construction of the additional space is suitable in that it is compatible with nearby land uses, which would not be damaged by the construction of the additional space. B, the board finds that the roads drainage and other public utilities would not be affected by the construction of the additional space. And C, the board finds that the construction of the additional space will not contribute to environmental damage. Section eight point four point two point two is not applicable. Section eight point four point two point three, the board finds that the construction of the additional space will not adversely affect scenic views from public ways or neighboring properties. That's what I have. The motion to accept the findings.
I, I so move.
Okay, and I need a second?
Second.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, Al?
Aye.
Sharon? Aye. Manny?
Aye.
Will?
Aye.
And Trevor?
Aye.
I need a motion to grant the special permit based on the findings.
I shall move.
Okay, Al moves and Will seconds, all in favor, Al?
Aye.
Sharon? Aye, sorry about that. Manny?
Aye.
Will?
Aye.
And Trevor?
Aye.
Okay, all right. All right, we've finished October, ladies and gentlemen. We can move on to December.
Thank you all, good night.
Thank you. Mr. Carson? Okay, I'm going to twenty-one, thirty-one Brown, sixty A Designer's Road map twenty-three parcel seven A. Application for a special permit under Wealthy zoning by law six point one point five B to construct a deck within the setbacks. And the board for this one will be Jan, Manny, Sharon and Trevor. Trevor, Manny, Sharon and Will. Okay. Mr. Brown?
My first time in front of a zoning board. I believe the app, the drawings have been submitted. I know the contractor put in some stakes two days ago for the town to review. To construct a deck and it will be no closer to our neighbor's border than the existing houses. No part of the deck will be any closer.
Okay, and I don't have any letters on this. Is there anyone in the audience who wants to speak to this case before I turn to the questions from the board? Seeing none, I will go to
This is Jerry, Co-Stephens. We have the cottage that lies directly south of where, you know, on the side where the deck would be. I was just, I didn't see the, the dimensions. You know, I, I didn't see any, you know, plans. What, what are the, what are the length and width dimensions, if I may ask?
Ten by twenty.
Ten by twenty. Okay, and so that's, that's ten foot to the rear towards my cottage and twenty foot long along the side. Okay, that's all I needed. And, and
And I'm sorry, sir, I need your, your name for the, for the secretary. So it's Mr. Curly Egan?
Jerry, J E R R Y. Co-Stephens is the last name. C is in cat, O is in Oscar, S is in Sam, P is in Tom, Q is in Edward, R is in Paul, H is in Henry, E is in Edward, N is in Nancy, S is in Sam.
Thank you.
We, I have no objections to, to this project.
Okay. All right. Okay, all right. Manny? Yes?
I just want to double-check this with the owner because he said ten by twenty. And from what I can see, it says nine by eighteen. And then there's an extension that goes around the corner. That's, I don't know what.
I think it says twenty-four feet.
It says twenty-four feet, but okay, so not minus nine. And it doesn't have a width on that.
No.
Right.
So that should be at least three feet.
The stairs.
Stairs.
Yep.
Right. Trevor?
Well, following up on Manny's point, I'm wondering if this drawing is, it's fuzzing it out. If this drawing is sufficient to proceed with, it's a little sketchy.
No, it isn't. And it's not signed by a surveyor and it's not stamped.
That could change that.
Right. Right, Mr. Brown, we, we actually need a certified drawing from a surveyor to actually proceed. We did want to open this case and let you present, but we won't be able to decide on this based on that. The other question that I had for you is, is it a condominium association that, in there?
The salt box condominiums. Eleven cottages on Designer's Road.
So typically, when we get a request from a, from a condominium, we need a letter from the condominium association that is in support of the project or opposed to the project before we can act on it. Just because of the common land, we can't see which is common land here and which is yours. So that's the other thing we're missing here.
Rounding the cottage, it's all common land.
Right, okay. All right, those are the two things I know for sure we're missing. Let me go around and make sure we we, we collect everything.
This is Jerry again. Can you hear me?
Yes.
There are, where, where Doug Brown's cottage is, there are only three cottages, uh, four cottages total there. And then there, down the road, down Designer's Road, there's another section with seven cottages. And, well, really, it really is only going to directly affect my cottage. Not, you know, not anybody, not anybody else's because the deck would come back towards me, but it wouldn't affect the two cottages that are on Designer's Road that are, that are to the east of, of Doug Brown's cottage. But I'm sure he can, I'm sure he can get a letter, if you need a letter from the association. Hey, I'm sure, I'm sure he can get a letter from them that it's, it's, you know, would be fine, you know, they, they would approve it. That's necessary.
I did, I, I did send an email to the president of the condo association, and he responded to my email that he had no problems with it.
Okay, we, we would need that from the board in order to proceed.
Okay.
Okay, I want to get around and make sure we've had all the other. Will?
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree with you. I think we need a, a, a really detailed plan signed by this, the surveyor. And I think we don't, we, I, I, I wouldn't feel comfortable with an email from the condo association. I'd want a letter, a letter signed by the, the powers that be.
Okay, thank you. All right, Jan?
So I was, I agree with everything that everyone has said so far, and when I went to look at it, it was not staked. I was also looking at this from probably a more technical point of view because it was my task to draft, make draft findings. So there were just, there's just a lot of information for findings that wasn't there. So when we're talking, just so Mr. Brown understands everything, when we're talking about an engineer's, a surveyor's drawing, it, it needs to be of the entire lot. Right? I mean, that entire lot to show all the dwellings because we need to know exactly how many dwellings. I found out because I contacted the assessor that these are all seasonal except for one, which is, which is a, a year-round cottage, but it's, it's just all information we need to put into the findings, I believe. There's six point one point, no, five point four point eleven, which is intensity of use application for cottages. It states, I'm, I'm, the lot, I'm sure, I'm pretty sure is conforming because I think there's definitely at least four thousand square feet for each unit. But it says that no part of one unit can be located closer than twenty-five feet to another, so we need to know what those setbacks are from Mr. Brown's cottage to the cottage, if you're facing his cottage to, to the left and also the one behind, and is this deck going to impinge into that twenty-five foot setback? Those are all things we need to know. I guess that's about it.
Okay. All right, who have I not been to? Rita?
Yes, I agree with these, I guess, these the need to have the exact information.
And Al?
No, no questions.
Okay, Andy?
I really can't talk, but I agree with the
Will understand.
Formality of the drawing or the lack thereof.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. So Mr. Brown, what we would do in this kind of situation is that you would ask us if we would continue the case and we would continue it out so that you have a chance to get these other things. And if, you know, I think we've pretty much laid them out, but you could also check with the building inspector if And if, you know, I think we've pretty much laid them out, but you could also check with the building inspector if you needed to on, on what they think, you know, what else we need here. So would that be something you would want to do?
Yes.
Okay. Chris? When do we continue?
Yeah, meeting is scheduled for January 13th. Meeting is January 27th.
13th or 27th, do you have a preference, Mr. Brown?
January 27th is fine.
Okay, all right, January 27th. All right, I need a motion to continue this to January 27th?
So moved.
Trevor moves, Janet seconds, all in favor, Jan?
Aye.
Will?
Aye.
Trevor?
Aye.
Manny?
Aye.
And Sharon?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, all right. Now we are on to Russo. 2132 Russo 174 Pleasant Point Avenue, map 35 parcel 113. Application for a special permit to have a fence above grade to provide privacy between the neighboring properties. Okay. Is Mr. Russo here? Or his representative? Mr. Russo? Anyone here, is anyone here to present Pleasant Point Avenue map 35 parcel 111, 113? Don't see anyone.
No, somebody held, Ms. Comely held up her hand.
I just want, I'm a butter, so I just wanted to speak about it when you get, when you get to that point.
Okay, all right, fine.
Thank you.
But first, I need someone who's actually going to stand up and say they're actually presenting this. Okay. I'm not seeing no one. I'm not going to set a board for this one for two reasons. We really can't hear this one tonight. First of all, this was advertised as a special permit, and it is not a special permit. It is a variance request, and we can't hear it when it's been misadvertised. But secondly, this is a variance. Probably all searched your zoning bylaws to try to figure out where we had fence bylaws, only to discover that we do not have fence bylaws. This is a variance on Massachusetts general law. And what the applicant has not given us is what section of Massachusetts general law we are actually looking at in order to have a variance. I have found section C49 S24, but that talks about the front and back fences, nothing about the side fences. So I really don't have enough information on this case to go anywhere with it, and we have no one here to present it. So what do we do in such a case?
I, I have a suggestion that we table it.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, well, actually, I, I don't think it's been misadvertised, so we probably just have to start from scratch.
Yeah, we'd have to probably start.
There's really nothing to table in the sense of it's, it's misadvertised, but I can just, I, I, if, if the applicant is out there in the ethosphere somewhere, I don't view it as my role to do hours of legal research, even though that's what I used to do, to try to find out, what is, what, what statute or whatever we're, we're looking at? And does the state give us jurisdiction? Because the town doesn't give us jurisdiction, so what, what is our role? What is the, the statute?
Yeah.
Yeah, I certainly couldn't find it. I tried putting in a call to the building inspector, and I couldn't reach any building inspector, so I gave up. Yes, Andy?
I have two points, one Will just alluded to, and that is, do we have the authority to vary a state statute? And number two, I happen to go out there today, and there is a fence there.
Yes, there is a fence.
So they're asking you to make the fence higher, is that what it is?
We don't know, and we don't have any applicant here to tell us that.
Okay, those, that's all I have.
The only thing, the only thing I will say, Andy, in response to that, is that the section four of the application says, "Make a brief statement of what you are requesting for the board, and under what section of the zoning bylaw or mass general laws you are applying." So apparently, we do have the authority to grant a variance from mass general laws, if only we knew what law we were being asked to vary, which we don't.
Well. Although I suspect, Sharon, that the law has to give us the, the authority, because, you know, just because there's a law that, you know, says the fence has to be eight feet, if that, or seven feet, if that's all it says, then we have no role in, in it at all.
Yeah, exactly.
I would agree with you, Will, I, I would, you know.
I think you're right, I don't know, I hate to say we need to talk to town council, but.
Oh, I.
I think we do.
No.
Well, I, I talked to the planning board, I think it's up to the applicant to tell us.
We don't have to talk to.
What that applicant is applying.
They, they have to talk to a lawyer.
Yeah, they have to talk to a lawyer.
You got it.
Rather than the town incurring expense on this, yeah.
Yeah, Sharon, you're, you're a much more decent person than I, because if I were reviewing this application and there, that wasn't filled in, I'd send it back to them.
Right, well, I think that is what we are doing.
To do that.
We are, yeah, I mean, this is just sort of like, okay. Come back when you're ready.
Did you want to hear what Mrs. Comely wanted to say?
Well, I don't actually think we need to, because we're actually not going to hear the case. So I think she has to hold until we actually have a case to deal with. I'm not going to read the letters either, because, you know, we don't have a board, we don't have a case, I'm.
Right.
You know.
Sharon, but how do we, how do we legally, what do, how do we, what do we do? How do, how do we say we're not going to hear this? Do we need a vote? Do we need, I mean, how do?
Trevor, I think Trevor is the answer to that, yes.
I don't know if I have the answer, but I have a suggestion that we continue it to the next meeting, and have Chris contact the applicant and tell them that they, they need to have it withdrawn and to reapply properly. And if they don't know how to reapply properly, they can hire a lawyer to help them. But this application either needs to be withdrawn, or it will be voted down at the next meeting when we continue it.
Right.
So don't we need a board in order to, we need a board?
We need a board, yeah, okay. We need a board, so it'll be. Trevor? Will? Rita? Sharon? And Manny? Okay, now, I, I will tell you that once upon a time, Manny may remember this, we had an applicant who was in the middle of proposing something when she left the room. And in that case, and did not return. And in that case, we simply denied the application.
You're a member.
It was memorable. I, so, I mean, I think partly, you know, the fact of the matter is that when an applicant doesn't show up to present, we deny the application, and they start over.
Yeah.
I, I, I don't know, I mean, it just seems to me that that's the case. Now, with, with virtual meetings and possible technology, I'm certainly willing to cut somebody a break and continue it to the next meeting. So I'm looking for a vote here.
Well, I don't see any particular harm in voting to deny this application, because it's, we can't hear it anyway.
Right.
It's not like we're, it's not like denying the application is going to deny.
It's a whole new.
Anything, because we, we can't.
It's a new application.
Right, it would have to be a whole new application, yeah.
Right.
Right, it's not a two, there's not going to be a two-year waiting list on this, it's just going to be a different application entirely.
Yeah, so I don't think there's any harm in.
Okay.
Denying it.
Denying it, if we want to go that route.
I, well, the thing is, I, without somebody here to tell us when he wants to come back to present, continuing seems.
Well, that's why I suggested that.
Yeah. So I need a motion.
I'll move.
I'll make a motion that we deny this application without prejudice.
Okay.
Meaning he can come back.
Yes, right.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor? Rita?
Aye.
Sharon, aye. Will?
Aye.
Manny?
Aye.
And Trevor?
Aye.
Okay, all right, that takes care of that one. They can start over again. All right, last. 2133 Manic, am I pronouncing that right, Mr. and Mrs. Manic?
Maniac.
Maniac. 65 Mill Hill Road, map 13 parcel 15, application for a special permit under Welford zoning by law 6.1.52B for the construction of a two-story addition within the side and rear setbacks. And the board will be Will, Manny, Trevor, Rita, and Sharon. Okay. All right, tell us about your project.
Hi, thank you for seeing us tonight. We are looking to add on a two-story addition to a rather small house. We have a growing family, so we're sort of outgrowing the space, so we're adding, trying to basically add in another bedroom. Not another bedroom, just reconform another bedroom. So, you know, this is where we're at, we're here to the zoning board to seek approval.
Okay, all right, and I don't have any letters on this project. Is there anyone here who wants to speak to it?
I can mention a few things, I'm, I'm working with Emily and Ethan.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Brendan Parker's my name, Parker Holmes is my company. They, I've walked through this with them a few times and looked at their plans, and, and walking around and trying to make sense of the house as it is. The house is obviously built a while back. And not trying to change the character of the house. The, the second floor has three bedrooms in it, and the biggest problem is that the, one of the bedrooms is about the size of a walk-in closet these days. It has, it has a perfectly good egress window, has enough room to put a twin bed. Maybe you can shut the door, maybe not. But, so they're looking to get that third, you know, qualified bedroom to, for a growing family of 2021 to have space, and also make their kitchen bigger, and make the first floor more livable for them. So it's, 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 it's a good plan, it might be, might be, there may be other ways to go about doing it, but budget-wise, this is what they're thinking of at this point. So just as a building aspect, they've, they've got a pretty good idea, but looking for your input.
Thank you, Brendan.
Thank you, okay. All right, and is, are there any neighbors here, or anyone who?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Can you identify yourself?
Yes, Richard Robichaud.
Hello, Mr. Robichaud.
This is a local family, they work locally, they are struggling to maintain their family heritage here, and I think this is a great thing that they're asking for. And we don't have many local families sticking around, and these people have.
Right. Thank you, you are not, however, in a butter, right?
I am not in a butter, I'm just not a friend, I'm just making a comment about, we need more local people in our town.
Sure, okay, thank you very much. Okay.
Hello, I just want to jump in, I'm a direct a butter.
And where are you in, what is your name here?
My name is Timothy Curly Egan, we live at 51 Mill Hill, which is next door. We have the only direct sightline to this project, and we are in full support of Ethan and Emily. It's a really hard place to live, and we support anything they're trying to do.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Anyone else wants to speak to this, okay? All right, seeing none, I will go to the board. Manny?
You can come back to me, please.
I will come back to you. Will?
No, I have no questions, the, the plans seem pretty, well, well-defined of what the request is.
Trevor?
Well, for, for the record, I just want to state that our kids go to the same preschool. I don't think that's a conflict, but.
I don't think that's a conflict, they're okay.
Small school. I, I don't, the only concern I have is it's getting really close to the rear lot line. Is, is Mr. Curly Egan, is he the one who owns the parcel that wraps around the back side of this, or is that another neighbor?
No, we are next door. It's another butter.
Another butter, and did we get any letters from?
No.
No, we have no letters here on this one.
If the applicants have spoken with that?
We have.
And could you enlighten us as to how that conversation went?
She, she was in favor of our project, she didn't have any concerns about the closeness of the property. I know if you've all come to the property, you've noticed how the property line is more through the middle of the backyard, and so it's sort of seething as far as like what the setback is back there. But between her dwelling and our dwelling is a garage that's uphill, so it's sort of creating a buffer. But she has, or she is in support of our project, at least that's what she said to us last we spoke.
Okay.
Okay, well, that, that was the only, that's the only concern I have, that it's, you know, we're going to have less than a 10-foot setback at the rear, where 30 is required.
Okay, I'll go, Will.
All right, Manny?
I don't think it's detrimental to anything here. We've done this before. And when you look at the topography, the land just slopes away there. So trying to move the addition around, I think it would be pretty hard to do, and very costly. So even though we've, we've, we've always been concerned, I think on this project, it's fine. There's plenty of land around it that belongs to somebody else, but, and it's all open, so I would approve this. Thank you.
Thank you, okay, Jan?
I agree with everything that everybody said. One question through you, Sharon, to the applicants, just to double-check what you said. The property behind you, that's a garage?
Yes.
Did I see immediately, okay. And the only other thing I'm just going to mention, and this is not our purview, I know that, but the assessor's card, this will be Board of Health, says it's a two-bedroom. And so that's not our purview, but I'm just pointing out.
Is that the building directly behind our property is a garage? And her dwelling. Secondly, I did speak to Hillary this week. And her records, it says that we are a three-bedroom dwelling, we have a three-bedroom septic.
Great, okay, great. Thank you.
Rita?
I have no questions.
Andy?
I was over there today. The property, there's staking and marking, I believe. And I'm confused, when I look at the plan, the, for the Kane Land Surveyors Plan, just appears that the addition is going to go much further than those stakes. Is, are those stakes where the addition is going to end?
I mean, it's a rough estimate, yeah, you know, it's, it's 15 feet off the back of the house, and 16, which would go to the, basically, the inside of the basement door. It's roughly, it's a little over 16 feet.
So who, I'm sorry. Oh, who, who did the staking in the?
I, I mean, I did, I was, you know, it's not a professional, you know, it's not. But I just, you know, you would have an idea where the project would be.
Okay.
I, I saw the stakes too, and they, they appeared correct to me.
Okay, and we're going to be out.
No questions.
Okay. Did I miss anyone?
You.
Me, yeah, I mean, you know, I struggled with how close this was to the back, just like everybody else. But I'm also aware that on Mill Hill Road, there's not very much room to go anywhere. And so I was more concerned about whether or not the neighbors would be harmed by this. I was more concerned about whether or not the neighbors would be harmed by this, and they don't seem to be, and I also recognize that, you know, it's, we're not in the sort of situation where people can just buy a bigger house.
Especially now.
Given the way the market is, so a family that needs a little bit more room seems to me like something where we can, we can cut them some slack, so I'm in favor of this project.
Okay, then I will move for finding a fact.
Okay, and I need a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor, Rita?
Aye.
Will?
Aye.
Manny?
Aye.
Trevor?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
Okay, 2133, this is an application under Welford zoning bylaws 6.1.5.2B to alter non-conforming single-family residence with second-story addition within the side and rear setbacks. The lot is in the R1 district, the lot is a lawfully pre-existing non-conforming structure having been built in 1960, according to the assessor's office. The existing non-conformities regarding the structure are inadequate lot area, 60,691.4 square feet, where 30,000 square feet is required, intrusion into the front setback, 19.7 feet, where 30 feet is required, intrusion into the rear setback, 18.6 feet, where 30 feet is required, and intrusion to the side big setback, 20.6 feet, where 25 feet is required. The proposed addition will increase the non-conformities in the rear setback from 18.6 feet to 9.7 feet, and in the side setback from 20.6 feet to 19.9 feet.
Eighteen point...
18.9 feet, right, I thought that was wrong. Didn't sound right, 18.9, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, good. The lot coverage will go from 11% to 15%, which is allowed in the district. There will be no change in use, the use confirms with the objectives of the R1 district as stated in Welford zoning bylaw 3.2. There were two appearances in court in support of the application, there were no appearances or correspondence in opposition to the application. The roads, drainage, and other public services are adequate for the project, although it's tricky to construct anything on Mill Hill Road, but whatever. The use contributes to the diversity of services available. That doesn't, never mind, I'm taking that one out, that's a mistake. The alteration will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conformity. The board has found pursuant to Welford zoning bylaw 8.4.2.3, scenic views from public ways and developed properties have been considerably treated, and reasonable effects have been made to minimize visibility of parking from public streets. The proposed, proposed alteration will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming structure, and the applicant has demonstrated that the benefits of the proposal will outweigh any adverse effects on the town and the vicinity after considering the district objectives for the district as provided for in Welford zoning bylaw 3.2, and the relevant criteria set forth in Welford zoning bylaw 8.4.2. That's what I got.
Sharon?
Yep.
Your first sentence, you called it, I think you called it a second-story addition, which makes it sound like it's over a first floor, I think you meant to call it a two-story addition?
Two-story addition, right, good point, thank you. Yeah, two-story addition, that's what it says in the application, thank you. Anything else?
Yeah.
I move, we accept the finding.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor, Rita?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
Manny?
Aye.
Will?
Aye.
Trevor? Based on that, I need a motion to grant the special permit.
I will move to grant the special permit.
Second.
Trevor will second, all in favor, Rita?
Aye.
Will?
Aye.
Trevor?
Aye.
Manny?
Aye.
And Sharon?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, you can, Chris will have your paperwork and things stamped that you can pick up, and you have a 20-day waiting period, and...
Thank you.
Just watch those small children on Mill Hill Road. Okay.
Good luck.
Good luck, thank you. Okay, what is the hour?
So happy, you made those people.
It was nice to end with that one. Yeah. It was a happy accident that we got to end with that one. Okay, Will, you did have something you wanted to bring up, it's only 8:15, if you want to bring it up, you may.
Yeah, I have a comment on our application, and when I was up in New Hampshire, we always had the landowner sign the application, and then in the application, otherwise, you run into the situation where someone gets denied, and down the road, they say, "Well, that was not, I didn't authorize, I didn't do this, I didn't do that." You solve a lot of problems if the applicant signs, the landowner signs the application, and then within that document, they recite who is going to speak on their behalf. It's a very simple change to the, I mean, I could make the change, and, you know, handwrite the change and submit it, I don't know where it came from, but I just propose that we might want to, might want to come to contemplate doing that.
Good idea.
I think it's a very good idea, yeah, I don't, you know, we ran into that with the guy who was the trustee for something, and we were, we had to continue the case, because we weren't sure that he really was a trustee for the property, so I think that would, that would make a lot of sense.
I mean, what brought it up here is, one of the applications, I think we did tonight, was the initial form had an applicant all crocked, all crossed out.
Yes.
And then he was the one that signed the application.
Right.
I said, gee, that doesn't make a lot of sense, you know, and...
Right, and I think that's the one with the fence, yeah.
It's a pretty simple...
Which had many other things wrong with it, but yeah, not the fence, it was the...
It's brown.
It was designer road, yeah, which was crossed off, but then he signed the application, and Mr. Brown didn't, yeah.
So, anyway, I'd be happy to make that change and ship it over to whoever prepares these forms.
Chris, you would send that to Chris?
Okay.
Thank you.
You know what, can I, if I can just butt in for a second?
Certainly, yeah.
What happens a lot of times is the owner hires these contractors, and the contractors are the ones that are filling out the application.
Right.
And the applicants just let them run with it, even though some of them even see the application. But you're wanting to have the landowner actually sign, which I think is...
Right, and I think you can have the, tell the contractor to get the landowner to sign the application.
Can I just, can I just butt in?
Sure, sure.
When you fill out a building application, you have pretty much the same thing, and where the owners are away, or whatever, they will send a letter stating that whoever the person is that's going to sign it can do that. So I don't know if that's, you know, anyway, that's all I needed to say.
Well, that's like a power of attorney, isn't it?
Right, exactly. Right, but they're going to have to sign a letter, sign the application.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, you just solve a lot of problems, I don't know if you've ever witnessed that, where someone says, "I wasn't authorized," because they're upset that they got denied, and they're trying to get around another submission, you know?
Right.
And then it has to be notarized too, so it's a, it's a little more, a little more forth to it than a letter just signed.
That's right. I think it's an additional step, but I think it's an additional step that might, you know, save us some grief down the road.
And I think it makes our job a lot easier, I don't have to keep looking to see who's signing, who the petitioner is, you know, the petitioner is always the landowner, it's really sort of, it's idiot-proof for myself, anyway, I need all the help I can get.
On some of these, yeah, okay, all right, if you could get that to Chris, I think it would be fine.
Yeah.
Chris, do we have minutes?
We have minutes from November 18th.
All right, I need a motion to accept the minutes.
Are these confidential?
Second, Dan, second?
No, 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 wait, are these confidential minutes that were in our packet?
No, I sent, no, but I sent, I actually double-checked it, because I questioned if I had sent out the draft meeting minutes, and I did. I think I sent them out like the first week in December.
Yeah. You did, so these are the meeting, the notes from our regular meeting?
Regular meeting, yes.
From the regular meeting. Are we also going to vote on the minutes for the confidential meeting?
I probably not, in case there's any kind of discussion.
No, there's not going to be any kind of discussion, because that was the confidential meeting, yeah.
I mean, unless you want to.
Yes, Jan?
I went through these again, and I found three little things that we really should change.
In the confidential minutes.
Yeah, and I don't know how to go about doing that. I can indicate a line and a word.
No, you don't want to do it in public meetings.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
So...
When I deal with town council, she sends me confidential paperwork through email. You want to do it that way.
Okay.
So I should send these three corrections to you, Chris?
Yes, and if you would, please, Jan, just on the subject line, write confidential one.
Okay, right.
Okay, so now we have a motion on the table, but it has not been seconded to approve the January 2nd, Jan's second, all in favor. Al?
Aye.
Andy?
Aye.
Trevor?
Aye.
Rita?
Aye.
Jan?
Aye.
Will?
Aye.
Manny?
Aye.
And Sharon, aye. Okay. I think that's it.
So our next meeting is the second Tuesday, second Thursday in January, right?
No, I think we have a meeting in, we have one more meeting in December, don't we?
No, it's Christmas week.
Oh, good, okay, so we get, so we get time off?
Yes.
All right, so January 13th?
Yeah.
Yes.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Merry, yes.
Merry Christmas. All right.
All right, we need a motion to adjourn, you can't go anywhere until we adjourn.
Don't move.
Okay, Al, second, all in favor, Al?
Aye.
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 Rita? Aye. Sharon, aye, Manny, aye.
Aye.
And Will, aye, okay, Chris, we're done.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Good night, guys.
Good night, everybody, yep. All right, let me see, what do I have here? I think it's very strange, you can turn the recording off, Chris.
Okay, wait one second.
I will.